Consumed and developing the furlough report or plan, I'm sorry. Briefing the staff and then implementing the furlough program and I'll speak more to that under the COVID update. Just an update on the pool project, I expect to issue the notice of award this week. We'll likely sign the construction contract within two weeks, but it'll have a conditional notice of notice to proceed that the work can't start before July 1st. And that'll be conditioned, of course, upon the governor relaxing the stay home order. But that time can be beneficially used by the contractor to process submittals and order the long lead equipment like the filters and some of the other equipment so. The 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 time isn't necessarily lost, it can be used beneficially. I'll be, I had hoped to get a memo out last week, but I will get it out this week to the council committees and the boards. That if they wish, they can restart virtual committee meetings, I'm coordinating the IT part of that with the with the mayor and Rick and. I I hope to have that, well, I will have that memo out. Before the end of the week. And then just three event announcements, there's a scrap metals drop off event that's sponsored by the Washington County Sheriff's Department, it'll be on May 3rd at the auditorium. We don't have a detailed brochure yet, but we'll post it when we get it. But it'll be a drive through event, so there'll be personal separation. Folks won't have to get out of their vehicles, they'll just be offloaded by staff at the event, so. It should be pretty, pretty safe, pretty effective. We've announced, yes.
Is that the second or the third?
I s- I'm sorry, the second. Yeah, I'm good catch, yeah, it's May 2nd, I'm sorry. Yeah, second, yeah, yeah. Uh, I've announced the yard waste drop off. Up at the Berrytown stump dump. It's the posters on the website. It's for each of the four Saturdays in May, starting on May 9th. It's morning onlys, it's it's probably half the sessions that we've had previously, but the town wants to really limit. Uh, limit the event, so it's four Saturdays, May 9th through the 30th. And then with the grant application that the council approved last week for the Centermont Solid Waste District Grant, we'll have a used tire disposal event. This will be on June 13th, also at the auditorium, and we'll provide more details as that gets firm up. And that's all I have under.
Are there any questions for the manager?
I had a quick question, this could also be COVID city response. The Times Argus ran an article and it was published on their Facebook page about the furlough policy and there were some. Comments that said city employees were told that they. Were not eligible for their normal benefits while furloughed. And this was again word of mouth, no actual sourcing, but I just, I thought for the public and while we have Dave on the line, just one more reiteration of that.
Yeah, it's just, it's beyond me where these rumors start, I mean, it's just, it's just mind boggling, no, we've gone out of our way to preserve the benefits for the staff. It's just, it's, it's mind boggling how these rumors start.
Thank you, I saw some comments there and I figured I could just use one more.
Yeah, I'm glad, I'm glad to point out how.
Appreciate that.
Any other questions for the manager? Okay, seeing and hearing none, we'll move on to visitors and communications, is there an item from anyone who wants to call in, who is in the chat? I'm just checking just to make sure. I don't see anything in the chat. Anything else that any other counselors want to bring up? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to old business. Steve, this will be item AA, the COVID 19 city response update.
Sure, um, as you may have read in the Times August this morning, we have successfully developed and implemented the furlough program. It's effective yesterday, Monday, the 13th, it'll go through June 30th. It's its primary focus is to control expenses through the fourth quarter and to try to minimize the year end deficit. Folks will be out for that period unless there is a need for a callback, it's it's a, there are probably 10 or 12 folks who are out on furlough and then. Seven or eight who are partial furlough. Approximately 19 employees are participating, be they full or part time. I'm very pleased with the response, like, consider it, if it's far more successful than I had hoped or anticipated, and I appreciate the. The participation by the employees. It also includes union and non-union staff. There is a possibility of some more participants, but it may take a week or two to work through those. And Don will speak to the financial impacts under the financial report underneath on the agenda. Another cost or financial management tool, I approached the Secretary of the Agency of Transportation last week to request. Deferral of the payment of the next installment of our big dig local share repayment plan, it's $103,000. I was pleased that the Secretary Joe Flynn agreed to that. And we're going to add that to the end of the four year term, the current four year term. He did request that if we received any meaningful reimbursement. Because of the COVID. Circumstances that we consider actually moving it payment back up, and I thought that was a fair request. I really don't see any significant reimbursement under the COVID. Any, any of the things that I've seen out there so far, I don't expect a significant reimbursement for COVID expenses. But that, that's significant from a cash flow standpoint, it helps just manage cash flow in a time when. Our revenues are dropping significantly. We respected the COVID program, I mean, the functional aspects and the the operating routine of the city operations have pretty much settled down now, the first three or four weeks were very, very reactive to. The events, the guidance that was coming out of the state and the federal government's small operations by any, any means, but. We're less hectic, less frenetic. And we're focusing now on the implementation of the furlough program. We can catch our breath a little bit and focus, my focus will be coordinating what reimbursement opportunities there may be. We have reduced the frequency of the advisory task meetings, task force meetings from three times a week to two times a week, kind of reflects. The change in conditions and circumstances. At the moment, it doesn't look like we've incurred a lot of COVID related expenses, I think Dawn has a handle on that. So our focus is more on managing financial operations to minimize expenses to deal with a loss of revenue. And revenue, loss of revenue is not a COVID reversible issue, so. We have to control that through expense controls like we've been doing. Later this week, and again, as we come up for air and catch your breath, I'll be working with Bill later into program and prioritize DPW projects for the summer. And to develop a list of prospective projects for economic stimulus funding, there's. You know, there's renewed talk at the federal level of stimulus bill, I think the COVID environment has increased the chances that there'll be a. Significant infrastructure bill right behind all of the other funding programs that they've got out now that are strictly focused to. To COVID and COVID operations and reimbursement, but I, I expect there will be. Maybe within six months, a transportation bill, and I think we're poised, not a transportation bill, an infrastructure bill, and I think we're poised to take maximum advantage of that. I think many of the projects in the two and a half million dollar infrastructure bond that we passed in 2019 could qualify for that, so. That would be a significant boost to the city if that program does come through and we can get as many projects through that as possible, so. Yes.
Do you have a chance to meet with Bill and discuss and prioritize which projects those would be?
No, that's what, that's what I said, I'm going to be meeting with him this week, I got a meeting scheduled with him for Thursday, we, we were trying to get together last week, but. Again, because of the furlough program, that didn't help happen. So if that program develops, I think we'll be in good shape, and that's pretty much my COVID report.
Are there any questions for the manager? So that council is aware, we did receive quite a number of documents today for the FEMA reimbursement, along with a. Meeting request if we wanted to attend. It was a lot of information and it just came today, so I'm sure there's still a lot more to learn about what will be reimbursable, but won't.
Yeah, I mean, we, I, they had a one session today, it's the. Participants briefing and there's a repeat on Thursday. But essentially what I got out of that, and I, we had, I know Don was listening in, but I don't see much. Significant potential for any, frankly, we don't have a lot of expenses yet, yet that, yet, and we may not, that are directly related to COVID. We've got a significant furlough program, but again, that doesn't qualify. Don can speak this later, but I think we've got under, the minimum to qualify for the FEMA program is 3,300 bucks, and I don't think we've got. Maybe $2,000 worth of expenses at this point, and that's pretty much for. Cleaning equipment, disinfection, probably PPE and stuff like that for the fire department. But so far, at least the invoicing we've received hasn't reached the $2,000 level, so. FEMA may not, may not be a significant reimbursement source for us.
So in the, one of the reports that we had in our packet, it talked about PPE training, is there a cost associated with the PPE training? Because I think those would be reimbursable.
I'll turn to Doug on that.
I'm not sure, Mayor, what PPE training is, we're all trained on it, have been for years. It was just the mandate to start using it was what became the real issue to us, it wasn't. It was having the amount that we needed and the fact that we needed to use it on every call, it really had nothing to do with training people how to use it.
I'm just looking on page two of the activity report from. The line that says dawning and duffing PPE. So I was just curious if that was related to it.
That was just basically practicing with what we have.
Okay.
Just making sure that everybody was up to speed on it, they've been practicing all along. Part of, part of the issue is we have to get dressed with the PPE before we leave the building. So to cut down our response time, the guys have been practicing over and over again, getting into the gear and getting out the door. It has added probably two to three minutes of us getting out the door because of getting suited up, gowned up and ready to go. That's to prevent the situation where we might pull up on the scene and somebody who is infected comes up and grabs one of our people. So that we need to make sure that when they get out of the truck, they've already got the PPE on rather than trying to dress in front of the infected person.
Yep, makes sense.
Yep.
Have you seen, I did, have you seen a significant decrease in call volume?
So we have seen a decrease in call volume, although the last few days it has picked up. Significantly, again, and I think what we're all noticing is that. People just aren't going to the hospital for the stuff they've been going for, for years, they're trying to stay away from the hospital as much as possible. Either they're trying on their own to stay away, or they're being coached to stay away when they call their primary care physicians. So we're just seeing a lot less people showing up to the hospital. I can't comment for the hospital, but last I knew they were about 25% of occupancy. So there's a lot of open beds up there.
Any other questions related to the COVID 19 city response? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to item 8B, which is the ratification of the collective bargaining agreement of local. Number 4-68 of the USW, Steve, you're on mute.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, that's going to have to be deferred a week, I think because of the COVID. Issues, they've had logistical problems getting the group together to ratify. Ray Betis is, is, is hopeful that that ratification will take place by the end of this week. So we'll just defer that one more week.
Okay, any questions from anybody, since it is on the agenda? If seeing none, we'll move on to item 9A under new business, which is the discussion regarding the future abatements of late penalties and interest for dog licenses, taxes and water sewer bills. Carol?
Hi all, I had put. Put a memo in the packet on with some information about where we are and. What the impacts might be going forward, you'll recall that back at your March 24th meeting, the council approved. A one month extension on dog licenses to the 1st of May, you approved a 30 day extension. On or waiver of late fees and interest on property tax bills from the 15th of March to the 15th of April. And a 30 day extension on late fees and interest for water and sewer bills that were due the 30th, 31st of March. So through the end of April. Obviously, we're at the first of those deadlines with the April. Cycle, the tax cycle starting tomorrow. And so I wanted to bring this, or not tomorrow, Thursday, wanted to bring this to council to see what you might be. Interested in considering for another month or through the end of the fiscal year. The numbers that I ran are of course best guesses. On I, we ran about a 20% on delinquency rate on the water bills typically were in the 13 to 14% range. And I'm estimating that we'll see a 10% delinquency rate in property taxes, we're typically under five. Those are just best guesses. And so what I did was taking those numbers, those estimated amounts, calculating. If council were to waive late penalties and interest charges through the balance of the fiscal year. And nobody made additional payments after those payments. Went delinquent, what would be the worst case scenario? And so those are the numbers that, that I show on the memo. And I believe that Dawn, because I gave these numbers to her early enough, I do believe that she incorporated those into her projections. So I, I present this to you to, to see what, what council might be interested in, I will tell you that. Most of the communities I've talked to are waiving late fees on dogs for the whole year. Dog license late fees for the city of Berry are $3 per dog. We maybe have somewhere between 150 and 200 dogs that go late, so in, for the whole year, we're. Looking at something in the $500 to $600 range. So, you know, that's, that's de minimis compared to the other things. So then the other things to think about are the, the, as I said, the property taxes and the water and sewer bills. So questions?
So we did receive that memo and it did show about $130,000 or $140,000 total. If we did take all of those recommendations, is, is that the gist of it, Carol?
That's the gist of it, and I pointed out in the memo that about 30,000 of the, the projection is enterprise funds, it's not general fund. About 100,000 of it is general fund. The council had already, with their previous actions. Looked at a waiver of, oh, good, my documents just went to the heck. Had previously looked at an abatement of about $16,000, so, so this would be another, you know, 85 or so on top of that, so.
So, and this should be kind of a conversation along with our next agenda item. Because we're talking about how much we're going to see for a revenue downgrade and expenses for our overall budget.
Yeah, they do, they do kind of go hand in glove, so.
Yeah, so with that. Jake, yes.
I did just have a one question for Carol, Mr. Mayor, and I was just curious how this interplays with some of the bills that are in the legislature right now, I was scanning through. The committee agendas today, and I noticed GovOps was taking up a bill on the matter of property tax forgiveness, is, is there, is there. What's the trajectory that you see there, Carol?
Yeah, I've been in contact with members of GovOps, with members of Ways and Means, with the Vermont League of Cities and Towns, and we've been talking about. What they're, what they're proposing. What they're proposing is not that the state would. Pick up any of the tab, what they're proposing is that they would. Loosen up the requirements to allow the legislative bodies of municipalities, councils and select boards. To make more of the decisions themselves that at the moment are controlled by statute and, and the, the. Legislative bodies don't have control over them. One of them being late fees and interest charges as we've been discussing. I was interested in doing this, we would have to, to be, to be completely above board, we would have to call a board of abatement meeting to do it. Correctly, and what the legislator, legislature is looking at doing is adopting legislation that would allow the, the council itself or a select board to do that. Without needing to call a board of abatement meeting. There is other language that's being explored around, as an example, education taxes. The way it works, of course, when we collect property taxes, we collect education taxes in addition to municipal taxes. And within 20 days of the date of a collection, we're required to pay the school their portion of the taxes. We're allowed to withhold an amount equal to our delinquency rate, so if we're running a 5% delinquency rate in a quarter, we can withhold 5%. From the school for the next 120 days. At the end of the fiscal year, so by June 30, we have to make the school whole regardless of where we are in collections. And that has the potential to be problematic this year for many, many communities, because there's a good possibility communities will find themselves very short. On tax collection come June 30th, and yet we're going to be required to front the money to the schools. So there is a language that's being proposed in the legislature that would have the state. Make the education fund whole for at least at that point in time before communities would have an opportunity to. Make up the difference at some point in the future. So there's a number of moving parts going on.
Are there any other questions or comments from council?
Are you looking for a motion? Or did you want to go on to Dawn first?
Well, we could go either way, I mean, this is, I think what Carol said is the projection is an additional 85, so the number that she provided is the whole amount. If we were to basically forego the projected interest that would be accrued. And I'm looking on page two of her memo through 616 on the. Taxes and on water and sewer through 71, Carol, is that correct?
Actually, I'm sorry, I misspoke, the, the 100,000 is new money. So it's in addition to what has already been waived.
Okay, so council, we can address this either way. If you'd like to take action on this now, we can have a motion and a vote. If you're not interested in taking action quite yet, we could hear from Dawn, get an overall projection, and then we table. Not officially table, but basically set aside this item and come back to it after. I think I'd like to hear from Dawn if we can, just so that we, we have an overview, and then we can come back and address this after.
Okay, so in relation to Carol's. Memo. The good news of that number is we had already taken the worst case scenario in terms of our property taxes, so we had already. Estimated that we were going to take an 800,000 roughly hit on those taxes, so. The impact is not going to be the 100,000. In the number that I'm giving you. Just because we've already recognized that. So between the numbers that I did have to make up and an updated. Ambulance revenue projection. Was only about 50,000 in addition to the 400,000 revenue shortfall. So we've already talked about the 200,000 cost cuts that were identified by the department heads. And then in addition to that, manager mentioned there was the voluntary furlough program, which took effect yesterday for most of the employees. And my calculation of that impact to the general fund will be about 175,000. Leaving an updated deficit of 25,000. So that was a, a big impact by, by having those employees take advantage of that furlough.
So the, the takeaway from that is that I think we've made significant inroads through expense control in the furlough program to. Address what could have been a quarter of a million dollar deficit. The, the projections, though, whether we're talking a quarter of a million or whether we're talking 25,000. Dollars are, are based on best projections with a little bit of Ouija board input and. A fortune teller's ball. I think what that says is that we've, we've managed to bring the order of magnitude of the projected deficit, as best we can tell right now, down to something. Far more manageable than what we had been looking at 45 days ago. But we still have two and a half months to go, a lot can happen, so. We haven't given up on expense control and will continue to, to try to hold a pretty tight rein through now and through the end of the year. But. You know, they'll, they'll tell you in October what the deficit was.
So Steve, it sounds like the projections that were just given is a $25,000 deficit. But on the previous item that we were discussing, it would add another 130, 140. So then we're looking at about 165,000, let's call it as a deficit, if we were to accept that other item. Are there any other revenue?
My understanding was the 100,000 had been accounted for.
Correct.
So the, the projected late tax fees and water sewer fees are incorporated in the figure that you're providing?
Not the water and sewer, but the property taxes, yes.
Right, because the water and sewer goes to the enterprise fund.
Correct, yeah, we had, in our first projection, Carol had given me the $800,000 shortfall in property tax estimate. And so that trickled down to the delinquency fees, so they've already been accounted for.
Okay, so if we take the recommendations that Carol had presented, at the end of this discussion, we would be projected at a $25,000 deficit for fiscal year 20.
Correct. Again, that's dependent upon our, our revenue that we bring in, that's the shot in the dark here.
Yeah, so I mean, that's the best order of magnitude figure that we can give you right now. And I think the most meaningful part of that is, is that we have taken significant steps to manage a projected deficit. But we gotta, we gotta ride out the rest of the quarter.
Yeah. Any other questions from council? Okay, seeing none. Um, I'm going to have us return back to the previous item, which was nine. Ooh, I gotta.
Nine A.
Nine A, uh, for the discussion regarding the future abatements. Um, is there any other discussion on this or a motion?
I would move that we accept Carol's recommendations uh to waive delinquency uh waive the late penalties and interest charges for property taxes through six sixteen and the water and sewer um interest through seven one.
Yeah. Dog license interest for the remainder of the year?
Yes. Thank you.
Yep, is there?
Sorry, I didn't hear who made the second.
I did. John, John did.
Thank you.
So do I actually need to abstain from this vote?
Um, so just for a public acknowledgement, uh, Michael has a dog. I think he just took the dog bark. Um, he has not yet uh registered.
John's got a dog. There's a bunch of you that have dogs.
Yeah.
True, but I'm the only one that's probably not registered.
But your intent is to register, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Seeing as this affects everybody and not just you, Michael, uh, if nobody else is opposed to Michael continuing a part of the conversation, I think he's fine.
He's fine.
Okay. So the motion is uh, as Teddy had noted, for the late penalties and interests, uh, we're talking about dog licenses, taxes and water and sewer bills. We noted that about a hundred of it will be uh toward the general fund, uh, which will projected uh have us at about a twenty-five thousand dollar deficit at the end of FY twenty. There'll be another approximately thirty thousand that affects the uh water and sewer fund or the enterprise.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I just, I, I want some clarification on the dates that uh, that Teddy mentioned. He said taxes through June sixteen. That would mean that, that uh um late fees and penalties would accrue after that, or do we want to go through the end of the fiscal year?
I'm fine going through the end of the fiscal year. I used that date simply because it was the last date on the table uh memo, but I'm fine with going through the end of the fiscal year if that's fine with John.
Yes, that's fine.
Thank you.
Okay. So just for clarification, it is uh for the remainder of FY twenty, those interest and late fees. Uh, so it doesn't uh correspond with the six sixteen data on the memo. Uh, but it is the end of the fiscal year, which is matching what the water and sewer is, which is also the end of the fiscal year. Okay. Any other discussion? Seeing none, or hearing none, I'll go through for the vote. Counselor Booton?
Hi.
Counselor Hemrick?
Hi.
Counselor Maury?
Hi.
Counselor Rio?
Hi.
Counselor Steinman?
Hi.
Counselor Wazak?
Hi.
And I am an I as well. That is the, yes, Carol?
Uh, I was going to say, I mentioned earlier that under current law, this kind of a, a waiver needs to be done by the board of abatement. Um, and so what I would like to do is I would like to call a board of abatement meeting simultaneously with next week's council meeting. We can have a board of abatement as long as it's a majority of the council and me and the city assessor. And I will make sure that Joe is on the call. Um, and then as the board of abatement, we can ratify this decision. If that works for everybody.
All right.
That sounds good. Okay. Okay, any other discussion? Hearing and seeing none, we are at roundtable and I will just go down through that same list that I've been using for the roll call vote. Counselor Booton, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Nope, pass.
Counselor Hemrick?
Yeah, I'd like to encourage everybody to complete their census forms if they haven't already. Uh, this has huge impacts on uh federal investments in Vermont and I, I'd done mine. It was really easy. Um, did it on my, my phone. So if uh, if you get the envelope, uh, jump right in and get it done. Um, also again, another thanks for the, I know Counselor Maury's already talked about this, but a thank you partnership for supporting restaurants and meals for the frontline. I went on their social media page last night, uh, last uh, a few days ago to donate to that effort and I encourage other people to do that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Maury?
Uh, I would agree with Counselor Hemrick about the census form. It ta, it is very, very easy to do. It takes just a few minutes to fill out. Um, and I as, did mine as well on my cell phone, so uh, that's all I've got. Pass.
Thank you. Counselor Rio?
Um, I want to echo what's already been said and I want to thank to all the volunteers and all the people that are keeping very moving. Uh, we definitely are very strong. And um, you know, just everybody keep well, we'll get through this and pass.
Thank you. Counselor Simon?
Um, I just want to say, um, I'm really proud of our community, the way that we, we really pulled together and we're, you know, taking this on and I'm, I'm proud to say that I'm from Barry and with that, I'm back.
Thank you. Counselor Wazak?
Yes, absolutely echoing everything that's already been said. Um, I love this community dearly and I love my adopted home. And a quick um shout out to Carol too, who put uh, encouraged folks to get their absentee ballots for the remaining elections for the year. Uh, Secretary of State Pondo has been working on figuring out how our elections are going to run, exploring um mail-in voting with other states are exploring as well. Um, but either way, you can go on now and request absentee ballot and not have to uh risk anything at the polls later this year because we know things like this come in waves. Um, and so there's bound to be more waves of this later on. So please do get your ballot, fill out your census, be a good citizen.
Thank you. So if all of us can, and maybe uh we can have some help from David Delcor at the Times Argus, just promote that census information, making sure that everybody that we can contact while we are socially distancing uh have an ability to find where that information is. It was sent out to everybody's household via mail. Uh, but again, if it was missed, it's something that could potentially be uh done online by just going in and logging on. Uh, the two dates that uh, or actually more than two days, but two programs, the scrap metal fundraiser is coming up Saturday, May second, eight AM to four PM. If you can bring your medal up to the auditorium. Uh, they said that if you bring up cars, you're able to bring up a car, they will take it away as well. That's part of the difficulty is finding someone that will have a wrecker or some way to get the car up there. But if you do so, it's a way to make sure that it's off your property. Um, salvage yard ordinance is something that will be coming up related to that, so that'll be back on the agenda uh when, at one of the upcoming meetings. Uh, also a reminder for the Berry City Yard Waste Disposal. So those are from eight AM to twelve PM and they're on May ninth, sixteenth, twenty-third and thirtieth. So those four days, so you can clean up your yard waste, you can clean up your scrap metal. And then in June, as the manager has said, there's a tire drop off that will be coming up as well. So uh, every bit that we can, while we're home, if we can start making our, our properties look nicer, it just benefits everybody. So the only other thing I will note is for the next meeting, we're looking uh at a couple of different items. I mentioned the salvage yard might be on there, uh possibly the taxi cab ordinance for discussion. Um, we have the FY twenty-one grand list lodging that we will discuss, uh, the bond anticipation note. Uh, but we also need to look at our rules for procedure. Uh, one item that has come up is that our current rules for procedure don't allow us to have executive session. So next week we may need an executive session and if we do, we need to make sure that our policy is adjusted and updated before we do so. Uh, so I'll go through and I'll, I'll check it out. I'll, I'll send it off to staff to see if they have any other suggestions. But then we can approve that policy so it can be in place so that if by the end of the meeting, we do need an executive session uh for litigation or for other, then we can make sure that that's in place. Um, I also need to make sure that there's a way to do so electronically. So for example, right now we have more people than just council on here. Um, I don't know if there's a way to kick people off. Uh, but I'm going to see if that's how we have to do it or a way to lock the meeting. I currently haven't found that way, but so technologically I have some work to do between now and next week to, to make an executive session happen if, if we choose to do so. So with that, is there anything else for discussion from anyone?
Lucas, if you cannot do executive session through the go-to meeting, uh, they do have the free version of, of Zoom, which I'm almost positive is.
Well, it might not be the technical tool either. It could be that uh at the point of the meeting where we conclude and go into executive session, uh, we then use a phone conference or some other means. It's just something that we need to make sure is secure that only council is a part of. Um, so how we do that, I've just got to find some more guidance on how we do that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If, if a phone conference is the answer, we, we have that installed capacity and I can arrange a phone conference uh from my desk. Um, I would, I would send out the uh connectivity information before the meeting so that everybody had it uh in the conference call. So if that's the answer, we're, we're, we're readily able to do it.
Yeah, there's, there's the ability to have a password protected meeting where you have a code that goes out and that would be either at that phone conference or a video conference. I just don't know if we have to, the same session running so that we are coming back into the meeting after the executive session.
So just as a side note, looking at, you know, with a conference call, you don't really know who's on the conference call. Whereas go-to meeting, it shows you the panels of who's on there. So I think that if there's a way to secure the go-to meeting, that's probably best.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just research it a little bit and see what the best option is and I'll make sure that everybody's aware of it before the end of the week. Okay. Anything else? Seeing none, uh, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.
Good night, everybody. Be safe.
Good night.
Well.
This conference is no longer being recorded.